Excuse me, can you say that?
[crosstalk]
Let's call the City of Marine City Commission meeting to order. Marine City Fire Department, Thursday, April 4th, 2019, 7:00 PM. Please have a moment of silence for our dearly departed. And please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the middle of all, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call vote, please. Our roll call, please.
Mayor Vandabosh.
Here.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Fawcett.
Here.
Commissioner Merchant.
Here.
Commissioner McCannan.
Here.
City Manager Levin.
Here.
All right, moving on to communications. I need a motion to approve cross-connections basic course completion by Aaron Atkinson. Cross and scale basic course for Aaron Atkinson. Basic cross-connection course for Dan DeGosepi. Cross-connection basic course for Mike Ittrich. Corrosion and scale basic course for Mike Ittrich. And basic cross-connection course for Mike Ittrich.
So moved.
Support.
Any questions on it? Nice job, Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry on. Moving on to public comment. Anyone in attendance is welcome to address the city commission. Please state your name and address. Please limit your comments to five minutes. This is time for you to raise issues. The commission will not respond, but the issues will be followed upon as necessary. Mr. Hopp.
The last two of three closing streets. Let's start off on a good note. MC Berle's team beat East China North yesterday, won nothing. The bad thing about that game yesterday, you know, they weren't going to collect for spring sports. All of a sudden, we're collecting. So they took a vote. They never were going to collect. You know, we're going to play, let's see, you want $100 million plus, let's collect for boys' baseball and the rest of it, too. You don't just pick and choose who you're collecting from. $150 to pay to play. Bad, bad thing was there? Where's the American flag? You got your pack, your big arena, your $400,000 football soccer field. Where's the American flag? Well, there it is, through the parking lot, past the pack, three quarters away, almost a mile's in the road. Isn't that beautiful thing? East China School District. But here's the kicker. The parents of the East China School or St. Clair ought to be a little upset as well. Got a girl, second half, laying on the ground. She ends up going to River District. Where's all the equipment? We've got no backboard. No one wants to pick the garbage? Do you need a garbage picker, a wheelchair? What's going on? Us parents, and I can speak for a couple of the St. Clair parents, they don't want to be speaking for them, and I'll eat too bad, but you know, we've spent thousands of dollars grooming our kids. Travel soccer, out-of-state tournaments, food, lodging. And we, you know, girl bust her leg, where's the splint? You know? No flag, you know? Can't even, you know? Unbelievable, unbelievable. Also, I hear that there's no conflict of interest, I guess, so why do I deal with the formalities? Just let the Burton's build what they got to build. Bring me 600 cars, 600-plus people, 300-plus cars, 15% of our population bringing it. No need to go through it. So, you know, allow somebody, you're going to vote to let somebody do something and then be able to profit off the patrons that are coming in here. Why even bother go through the legal formalities? You know, when you're going to lower my taxes? Can't go down to my waterfront. Here's a good one, though. You got St. Clair, they're all up in arms because they're going to have to pay for parking. Imagine that. You know, private property, guy don't want his parking lot tore up for what's going on down there, don't blame him. You know, they're all crying. Now, you know, up here, it's going to cost $20,000 to pave 300 Broadway. As long as the city taxpayers are paying it, because you only rented the building, you didn't rent the parking lot, that should be a free parking lot. So, you know, people with no driveways on Market Street, you need to place a park, 300 Broadway, once they pay it. Now, let's take a look at, we got Broadway Park, we got water treatment park, got Down by Nita Park. Each one of those are at least $20,000 apiece. You know, Port Huron takes care of its waterfront with the city-type tax. Years ago, '95, they've had some kind of tax to make their waterfront beautiful, take care of it. You know, on the businesses, on workers, you know, if you're working in the same city you're in, they give you your money back. Or vice versa, I'm not sure how it works. But, you know, so now we got at least another $60,000 on the taxpayers for waterfront parking lots we can't even use, barely. Yeah, I know, I see. You know, I looked you up today online. Says you were like 47, 48 years old. I did the math. You should went to school with Jim Hasselup and Becky Lepley's daughter, if I'm not mistaken, if that was correct. Yeah, I know, there's Uncle Dan, longtime family friend, too. Like I said, I can't get no answers out of a bunch of pals who've been around for 20 years. Things that look funny, people that did people favors who were in power. You know, school districts got me angry and then after yesterday. Because it all kind of blends together, if you all know the big picture. And most of you who've been around forever do know the big picture. Don't like to complain, but man, oh man, it's hard not to come here.
Anyone else like to speak?
Hello. Erin Daye with River Rock Teen Zone, 300 Broadway. I just want to invite the board and anybody from the public on April 13th, from noon to 4:00. We have a global youth service day. So what we have going on over at 300 Broadway is we received a matching grant, so the kids have made some murals that are going to be painting the floor. And so we want to invite everyone over if they want to participate in some painting. We have pizza and pop that was graciously donated by Jet's Pizza and Jackie over at the Corner Grocery. So we have that going on, and we have lots of updates that have been happening over there. Our contractor has been in there, there's been a lot of work done. So if everybody wants to come in, check out, see what we got going on over there, see where we're at, we would love to have you guys all come and join us. That's about it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Laura.
Okay. Laura Scotchop, 430 South Water Street.
And Erica Delaney, Marine City Area Chamber.
Okay. I've written this, so it'll be easier. In 2016, an unconventional man with larger-than-life ideas set out to put Marine City on the map, both nationally and internationally. "Let's break a Guinness World Record," he said. He knew this wouldn't be possible without the help of so many. So we gathered friends, families, neighbors, business owners and strangers, together in Drake Park, to achieve this goal. On October 15th of 2016, everyone worked together like clockwork, each with their duty and a common goal in mind, to create the longest popcorn string in world record history. Well, Marine City, it's, we officially did it. 1,200 square, or 1,200 feet of popcorn, and I have the certificate to prove it. Took two and a half years to get it. To make this impossible feat even more amazing, Gary Coes decided to connect two countries with this string of popcorn, which he did do. I want to thank everybody that made this dream a reality, for him and for Marine City. It was a day that many will never forget. A great village worked together to make the impossible possible. Marine City is the best place ever. And plus, we have free parking. So, with that... And no fences. But with that, I would like to present the city with the World Guinness Record Certificate for the longest popcorn string measuring 365.76 meters, 1,200 feet. And it was achieved, and unfortunately, we had to do it this way, by Gary Coes, Laura Scotchop, and Dave Vandabosh, and Marine City, for Marine City and Drake Park.
Everybody knows I love hugs.
Okay, Mr. Biden.
Rough crowd.
How does it stand for photo? Does it stand for photo?
No, you, you say, okay, we have another Guinness Record.
You gotta get a photo.
Oh, yeah, a photo. Oh.
Another hug? Dave, pull that out of the, please.
What's that, you turn it?
Wait, stay there. So we are looking to break another record, and Laura is going to share what we're looking to do in October.
Okay, so unfortunately, in 2017, we did unofficially break the pumpkin carving record, but we were disqualified. So we just found that out about a month ago. So unfortunately, we were disqualified for that one, but that's okay, because there's more to come. So this year, in October, we are looking to break the record for the most people dressed as pumpkins.
And there is no record.
There is no record.
There is no record.
But it has to be 250 or more. So I think we can do that. I've already recruited, right? Everybody here, right?
And Dave doesn't have to grow them.
You don't have to grow them, we just have to dress them.
But we will still carve pumpkins.
We'll still carve and have fun, and we'll still have the activities in the park and all the things around town. But it's another way just to bring community together and have fun, and it's going to be awesome. But I will get more details. I filled out the official application, and the Chamber and River Rock Teen Zone will be the major sponsors for that. And I will make sure and get that information out to everybody, so everybody can participate.
And our permit into the city.
And our permit into the city.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Hearing none, we're going to move on to approval of the agenda. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Any questions concerned? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Moving on to approval of the minutes. The city commission regular minutes, March 21st, 2019.
Make a motion to approve the amendments for the city commission regular meeting, March 21st, 20, or, yeah, 2019.
Support.
Any corrections, deletions to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carry. Moving past the consent agenda, we have nothing tonight. Unfinished business, the strategic planning results.
We have been reviewing this, and all that this is, is the final version, along with all of the supporting information that was received, a summary of all of that. At this point, really, all you need to do is adopt it. And of course, carry through with it in the next couple of years.
Okay. Can I get a motion on this topic?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the strategic planning results. Yes, our 2019, 2021 goals and priorities.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions or concerns on it? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Moving on to announcements for board vacancies. We have one vacancy in the historical commission, one vacancy for TIFA, one vacancy for a building contractor on the dangerous building board, and one vacancy on the library board. And those need to be turned into the city clerk by Monday, April 20.
This is just a duplicate of what we gave you before, we didn't have anybody applying, so.
Okay.
Asking for applicants.
If anybody's got time and would like to sit on a board, please turn your application in to Chris. Moving on to beach volleyball league.
We do have a representative here to represent the information. I'd like to step up to the podium, we can review this request. I did provide them with a copy of the email that you sent me requesting the information. In essence, it's requesting use for the volleyball field in the downtown area for a league. And if you want to just describe a little bit about the specifics?
All right. I'm Bobby Wilson, 834 Robertson Street. I'm seeking permission to use the San Volleyball Court near Lighthouse Park, across from the Marine City Fish Company, for a competitive beach volleyball league, open to any and all high school-age boys, girls, and mixed doubles teams. The league is not open exclusively to Marine City residents or high school attendees thereof. I've had some interest from neighboring districts such as Algonack and St. Clair. If I could get more support from either of them, we will have members from both, or all three, Algonack, Marine City, and St. Clair High Schools. If there's anyone else high school age in the area, they're welcome to join. No admission fee. T-shirts will be for sale for members of the league at their own cost.
Anyone have any questions?
What are you going to call it?
The name of the league, Marine City Beach Volleyball League.
Okay. So that's going to be on the shirts?
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea, and I'm glad that you put this all together. Thank you.
At this point, how many teams do you think you have interested?
Currently, four. But after pending approval, I will be able to get a flyer put out in the Marine City High School main office on the counter. I'll be able to make an announcement of the flyer, and hopefully, interest will go up from there.
So the only question that I have is that on the weekends, so we were talking earlier about some kind of a sign saying that those courts are in use for leagues during the days and times that you want to, you know, play there? Because I'm just worried that if you've got a group of kids that are there, and they're currently playing, and they're in a hot game, and all of a sudden, you're like, "Yeah, you guys got to stop, we've got a league going." You know, it's kind of easier to have something written at that location saying that at 10 o'clock in the morning, the leagues are coming on. All right.
One of the things that we've talked about, about with our budget, is the recreation programming for the city. And at our last meeting, we kind of talked a little bit about that, and that we could potentially just have a webpage on our main website that would be, in essence, a clearinghouse for recreation programs. I think this is kind of a perfect example of something that is material that we would be able to have on that site, and he, in essence, is providing a service that had we have a recreation director, this is something that they potentially would have done, and he, in essence, is serving that need. So I think it's something that we could perfectly put on our website.
Any other questions, concerns on it? Can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Marine City Beach Volleyball League.
Second.
Any other questions or concerns?
This will stay in existence after you leave high school, or after, you know, carry on?
I will most certainly try my best. Currently, I plan on attending college a few hours away. But once the spring semester, I guess, ends, I'll be back in town around mid-May to hopefully start up the second annual Marine City Beach Volleyball League.
That's great. Good for you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
There's no more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Hey, are you going to accept any donations from the public to help for shits and that?
I have not thought about donations from the public.
But there could be some from different companies and private like to donate.
Possibly. I could, I have some people who could help me with marketing and getting sponsorships from local businesses.
And that's something, the information he can provide me that we can put on the website.
Perfect. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the local pavement warranty. Explain that to us.
I would love to explain that to you. This is something that is coming down from the state level. What it is, is any project that uses state or federal funds that is over $2 million is required to have a road warranty. The state has worked to put together all of the language and warranty agreements for these type of projects. I don't necessarily know that I foresee any $2 million projects in the community anytime soon. But as I said, this is something that we have to have in place. It's mandatory by the state. But it's something that if we don't use, it's really not going to affect us.
All right. Anyone can I get a motion to approve the resolution?
It'd be two separate motions.
I move we approve resolution number 0102019, adopt a local pavement warranty program.
Support.
Any questions on it? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Fawcett.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner McCannan.
Yes.
Mayor Vandabosh.
Yes. And now, I guess, we have to implement a program for it.
I move we approve resolution number 0112019, implementation of local pavement warranty program.
Support.
Motion's forward. Any questions on it? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Fawcett.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner McCannan.
Yes.
Mayor Vandabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
All right. Moving on to the chlorine tank clean.
I think Mike can probably do a little bit better job of describing the situation here.
Back in February, we had a high hit of mercury sample at the wastewater treatment plant. As you seen in the letter, what we did was went through and cleaned everything out, all the contact chambers. Went through everything, cleaned all the pumps, came back through, hit another sample, still came up a little high. Went back to the same thing, then we went back sampling and found out that it was actually coming from chlorine tanks. The mercury level indicator somehow misfired and shot a blurb of mercury into our chlorine. So now it's considered hazardous material, and we need to get it out of there. But in a sense, we isolated that tank and isolated the machine. All of our readings are normal. We lost about five inches of just maybe like a regular thermometer of mercury, and 1,700 gallons of chlorine. So it's a .7 ppm, not very high, but they carry, they still call it a hazardous.
So you're going to have to have that tank pumped and then cleaned?
Yes. Oh, yeah. It's got to be all the way disposal.
Where are you going to take it, Mike?
Shartier taking it out to the site. I think it's EG something down Detroit.
So, do you have an idea what it's going to cost?
It's...
We have a quote there.
It should be a quote right in there.
We're in essence, running off of one tank and close to emergency state. There isn't really a lot of companies that will take care of this. In essence, what he's asking for at this point is to waive the competitive bidding and approve the quote from Shartier to clean up the situation. And keep in mind, this is the wastewater treatment plants, not the waterworks, it doesn't affect the fresh water or anything.
I'll make a motion that we waive competitive bidding for the chlorine tank cleaning.
Second.
Any other questions on it? On waiving competitive bidding? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Fawcett.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner McCannan.
Yes.
Mayor Vandabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the having Shartier do the cleaning at a cost of $5,565.
Support.
Questions on that? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Fawcett.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner McCannan.
Yes.
Mayor Vandabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
And on a quick side note to that, I'd like to have Mike go through the plants and make sure that we don't have any other indicators that are mercury-based. And he does have something there now that is non-mercury.
Yep.
All right, now moving on to the salt purchase.
Same as last year.
Remember, you have new people here. You have new board members, you might want to explain a little.
Oh, sorry. We go through my deal, which is estate bidding. They do all the bidding, and we just go ahead and buy it, purchase through the state. I pay a third of what other contractors pay for salt.
Yes.
See, David's about dry. So, which is a yearly thing that we, you know, I come to you and ask you support for me to buy the salt through my deal. And it's a great, it's a great program. We buy our vehicles, salt, everything through the state of Michigan. They do all the bidding, we don't have to do nothing else for bidding, just click on it and buy it.
So we're just waiving it for now, and then you'll come back with the price later?
I can't give, we don't, I have to order this by April 15th.
Yeah, I understand.
We don't know the price until...
Yeah, I know, I said that, but...
They have to get all their volumes together to see what they're going to get, price wise.
Right, yeah.
Do you know how much you're going to order?
Probably between 200 and 300 tons.
All right.
What's that?
Child's play, she hasn't bet more than that.
Well, I got 200 tons still, my shit.
Let's move on to, does anybody have any more questions on that?
We got to wait.
Can we get a motion to waive the competitive?
I'll make a motion to waive competitive bidding for the 2019, 20, salt order.
Second.
Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner McCannan.
Yes.
Mayor Vandabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Fawcett.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, Mike. Moving on to ordinance number 2019-005, fireworks introduction, first reading.
We have an existing fireworks ordinance that is not compliant with the new state law. This ordinance, in essence, is going to bring it in compliance with state law. The old state law allowed fireworks every national holiday, the day of, the day before, and the day after. The state has since changed the law to reduce the number of days. They include now New Year's Eve, the Saturday and Sunday immediately preceding Memorial Day, June 29th to July 4th, and then July 5th, if the date is a Friday or Saturday, and the Saturday and Sunday immediately preceding Labor Day. And just looking for a motion for the first reading to be in compliance with state law.
I'll make a motion to, for the first reading of ordinance of the city of Marine City, St. Clair County, Michigan, for the fireworks ordinance.
Support.
Motion's forward. Any questions on it? Yes, Lisa.
I know in the past, I know our law enforcement didn't have a whole lot of bite to the old ordinance. Does this give them a little bit more leeway, I see through this civil infraction? So the civil infraction is $1,000 fine, 500 goes to us, and then the rest goes to the state in that case. So it's, that's a pretty hefty fine. So our officers can now do something about it.
The top part's catching them.
Yes, I know.
Do we have a motion in support? Lisa.
I made the motion.
Okay. Any other questions on it?
There's times now, too, that they only have up to a certain time. It's at 11:45 on most days. Can't start till after 11:00 AM, and it goes till 11:45 PM, and then that's it.
Except for the New Year's Eve.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns on it? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner McCannan.
Yes.
Mayor Vandabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick. Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to financial business, disbursements including payroll of $161,282.56.
I move we approve the disbursement of, including payroll, for $161,200, sorry, $161,292.56.
Two-hundred-and-eighty-two.
Eighty-two.
Two-eighty-two. It's been a long day.
We've got a motion in second. Any questions on those? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Van Bosh?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner McCannan?
Yes.
All right, moving on to the city manager's report.
I've attended the State of the County and the Broadband Committee meeting. I held department head meeting last week. I have been in some meetings with DTE, MERS, Friends of City Hall, Tetra Tech, the property owner just south of the river, Mr. Porkowski, Mr. Gallus, the owner of the Clinton Friendship, and then the Vertons with MEDC and EDA. We'll be ordering the wayfinding signs next week. The ferry part will be on there in anticipation of hopefully getting it back up. There is going to be a cover over it that we're ordering just so that people don't look for it with it not being there at the moment. We plan on doing the last two sidewalk sections together this year instead of separately. We think that we have enough funding to be able to cover that first round with those two. So should be before the board soon for approval for pricing from the contractor. That's it.
Any questions for the city manager? All right, moving on to commissioner privilege. Cheryl, would you like to start us out?
I also attended the St. Clair, or the state of St. Clair County luncheon. Senator Gary Peters was there and talked about, you know, the Great Lakes and how privileged we are to live on the Great Lakes and everything that the state does, even through the federal government, to try to protect the Great Lakes. And I'm just looking forward to a beautiful season of boating on our rivers and lakes and streams and fishing and everything, and there's some new boating laws in effect. I just want to remind everybody to make sure you know the boating laws, especially about the, we discussed it last week, or last time we were meeting, about some of the no-ake zones have changed. And really, that's about it. Thank you.
Nothing this evening? I'll pass.
Yeah, I have nothing at this time.
I've got one thing. Okay. I got news from Jim Downey, whose son was in the State Geography Bee, Spelling Bee. So he did make it, I'll read what he sent. "I wanted to share some good news about Jimmy's appearance at the State Geography Bee yesterday at Western Michigan. He ended up being one of 107 semi-finalist competitors whom they willow down to 10 finalists. He was one of four students who had a perfect score through the preliminary rounds which qualified him as a finalist. Among the top 10, he placed sixth. So it was an inspiring performance for all the participants, and we just want to thank him for representing our town and doing such a wonderful job." Thanks.
Anything else?
Nope.
Just to kind of leapfrog in what Cheryl said, please be aware, once the boating season starts up, if you get boarded by the Coast Guard and you have marijuana on your person on your boat, you are going to get a ticket. The Coast Guard does not care what the state says. So just keep that in mind.
All set?
That's it.
I don't have a whole lot today, but the weather's starting to change. Hopefully, we get some nice weather and get to be able, enjoy going outside again and staying outside. With that, I'd like to, the city commission would like to enter into a closed session to review legal opinion regarding consideration of purchase of real or lease of real property, and review a legal opinion regarding distribution of handbills. There may or may not be action taken upon returning to open session. Could I get a motion to enter into closed session?
So moved.
Support.
Anyone have any questions? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin?
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant?
Yes.
Commissioner McCannan?
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh?
Yes.